Yeah, no, you just, there's a, there's a product to use, yeah. Absolutely.
You have to start dulling it down so it doesn't shine so much.
It's like the America's Finest Turtle Wax?
All right, we're gonna get ready to go. Uh, would everybody, this will be the meeting number two of 2020. And would you please stand with us and do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathleen, roll call, please.
Rinker.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Kreitzer.
Graham Murray.
Here.
Moppen.
Here.
All right, tonight, we have a couple of proclamations. First one is proclamation of retirement. Matt, please.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I have a proclamation here, it reads, whereas the city of Burlington desires to honor Terry Norton for thirty-seven years of service with the city of Burlington, and whereas Terry has served as a records clerk for the city Burlington, city of Burlington Police Department, beginning employment on July twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-two, until January twenty-third, twenty twenty, and whereas Terry has provided outstanding, loyal, and dedicated service to the citizens of Burlington, Iowa, and now therefore, we the city council of city of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby recognize and commend Terry Norton for her outstanding conscientiousness and faithful service to the city of Burlington and its police department. We further extend our sincere appreciation and congratulations to her on her retirement. Signed, sealed, this twenty-first day, January twenty twenty. John Phillips. And I also have a plaque here that reads, "The city of Burlington, Iowa hereby honors Terry Norton in recognition and appreciation of thirty-seven years of dedicated service faithfully and loyally serving the citizens of Burlington, Iowa retired January twenty-third, twenty twenty."
Thirty-seven years, you get us all.
Well, thank you all. For thirty-seven years, I can handle all of you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Almost good.
Take my skin inside.
With the target, I probably get a target here.
Go to the future, Tia. Ready? Okay, you're a little bit early. I mean it's.
What?
Got it.
Thirty-seven years, sure.
They're armed, so you better be careful.
Yeah, I'm not scared.
Speech.
First of all, to all the representatives here, I want to thank you. I personally have been honored and privileged to work for the city of Burlington for thirty-seven years. I love my job, and I couldn't ask for a better place and better people to work with, so I thanked the city for that. And so you don't have to look at my butt. I want to thank all my coworkers who are now considered my friends. I've appreciated you very much, and you have been very bearing with me, you know, because when I came in, that nickname F R B has stuck for years, and we all know what that means. And even though I love what I do, and I'm gonna miss every one of you. Mississippi River has catfish, my name on them, and that's my head, so thank you all very much for everything, and I appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, now we have a proclamation for Martin Luther King Day. Linda, please.
Your honor, I have a proclamation. Whereas the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday celebrates the life and legacy of a man who brought hope and healing to America, we commemorate as well the timeless values he taught us through his example. The values of courage, truth, justice, compassion, dignity, humility, and service that so radiantly defined Dr. King's character and empowered his leadership. On this holiday, we commemorate the universal unconditional love, forgiveness, and non-violence that empowered his revolutionary spirit. And whereas Dr. King once said that we have to decide whether we will walk in the light of creative altruism or on the darkness of destructive selfishness, life's most persistent and nagging question, he said, is what are you doing for others? And now therefore, we the city council of the city of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby recognize January twentieth, twenty twenty, as Martin Luther King Junior Day in the city of Burlington, and we also wish to honor Burlington's first African-American mayor, Shane A. McCambell, who served on the Burlington City Council as mayor from January twenty-fourteen through December twenty-nineteenth. Signed and sealed this twentieth day of January twenty twenty, the Honorable John Phillips, Mayor. Come on down, Shane.
She's got a bad back, so gentle, gentle ladies and gentlemen.
I'm getting my camera ready now.
Cut off choke time with a spicer, man, with you.
No beer hug.
She's probably gonna be great.
Yeah. Please. Thank you. Gotta have a few words. Better start a clock or something.
First, I would like to, uh, thank the council for, uh, recognizing me and including me. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for, uh, recognizing me, uh, and including me on this proclamation. First off, it kinda took me by surprise. Jeez, man. The more I get, the more soft I get, I thought I was already past this, but... First off, when I found out, when the mayor finally came clean on me, uh, receiving the proclamation, well, I've been giving proclamations out for a long time, for about six years. And when we give out proclamations, it's, uh, it's like if we give out a proclamation for diabetes, well, somebody's gotta take it. So, we just hand it to 'em. I didn't actually realize that my name was going to be, uh, on the proclamation, and then... And then when I, uh, looked at it and I saw my name with Martin Luther King's name, I just realized the, uh, it's heavy. You realize the gravity of it. I told the mayor, I said, "Man, you're the only mayor that follows a strong mayor that doesn't try to push him out the door." I said, "You keep trying to drag me back in."
It's the mob.
And I told him, I said, "Well, dude," I said, "just send me off to pasture." And he says, "I'm gonna give you the same words you gave me. It's not about you. It's about, uh, anybody that comes after you, or somebody that's young that may look up to you." And I thought, when I was asked, "What does it mean to be the first black mayor?" I really didn't even think about it, but now I do. And what it makes me think of is that whenever there's a first, that means that there's gonna be a second. And I'm glad to, uh, I'm glad to receive this proclamation tonight. I'd like to, uh, also, uh, recognize, uh, the fact that some people say that council members, they never listen to what anybody says, you know? They've all got their minds made up on everything, but I'd like to recognize my dear lifelong friend and one of my biggest supporters since I've run for council, James Redd, who, uh, brought it to John Phillips' attention and said, "We need to, uh, we need to do something about this and take care of it on Martin Luther King Day." So I would just like to say, uh, thank you to all my friends that came. I walked in here, I didn't know what was going on. Those people, I said, "You're here for me." But I would just like to thank, uh, thank all the people that, uh, that have been supportive of me. And, uh, to the council again, uh, thank you all for recognizing me, and trust me, I'll get out of your hair, and I'll roll over and leave y'all alone. But I'm so glad to be accepting this tonight. I truly appreciate it, it means a lot. Thank you.
All right, and in the words of our former mayor, if any of you came for those festivities and like to dip out, you sure may. But you're more than invited to stay.
Apparently, they're not here for the good stuff.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody that came, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if everybody's gonna go, I mean...
Yeah, no, council has to stay. All right, so, uh, we'll move on. Next is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one, consent agenda, have, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by city council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent, we have the usuals, finances and miscellaneous, which is minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette permits, reports and bonds, and resolutions. Number one, resolution approving the demolition and nuisance abatements for various properties. Number two, resolution approving the final acceptance and final payment and release of retention monies for the twenty-eighteen Front Street Hawkeye Arch Sewer Repair Project. Number three, resolution approving an agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on the seven-hundred block of Maple Street between South Seventh and South Eighth Street. Number four is a resolution approving an agreement with Snyder and Associates for engineering services related to the design of the traffic signal improvements for the Roosevelt Corridor. Number five is resolution awarding the contract for the twenty-twenty auditorium electrical repairs, first and, first floor and two lower levels, including the tunnels. Number six is resolution approving, approving the contract for the twenty-twenty auditorium interior repairs, first floor and lower two levels, including tunnels. Number seven is resolution approving the city of Burlington to financially support an application to the Iowa Finance Authority for the purpose of a homebuyer sub-recipient program. Number eight is, uh, is a resolution approving development for Agreement of Partners, Inc., for the Community Catalyst Building remediation project at three hundred Washington Street, Burlington, Iowa. And Mayor Pro Tim, some appointments?
Yes, we have two appointments. For the low-rent housing agency, we have Jeff Burkard and March and Rachel Lindine. And for the Riverfront Advisory Committee, we have Sid Carter and Doug Smith.
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to remove any of these items?
Hello.
Chris Refki, twenty-two, twenty-eight Madison Avenue. Number four, the Roosevelt Corridor.
Okay.
And this allows for some questions, more to back and forth.
Okay. Anyone else? Counsel, anyone? I need a, a motion.
Your honor, I move to approve all items listed under item one, consent agenda, with the exception of item number four.
Second? Still moved and seconded? Kathleen?
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Yes.
Moppen.
Yes.
All right. Ordin, the next up is an ordinance. You're gonna have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending the mayor and council compensation provisions of the city of Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances.
Second?
This, uh, ordinance is on to amend the pay for mayor and council members' positions. It would change the mayor's position from five-fifty per month to ten thousand per year, and the positions of council members from five hundred per month to nine thousand per year. Uh, this would go into effect, uh, after the next election. The language in here also includes language to, uh, on an annual basis, see the, those compensation amounts adjust with the Midwest CPI, um, as published by the Department of Labor. It would not, or could not exceed three percent, so if CPI were over three percent, it would still be capped at the increase of three percent on that annual basis. Uh, this has come up as a, at a request from, well, from among the council to, to visit the, uh, making the change, it hasn't been changed in a few decades to this.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the audience?
Chris Refki, twenty-two, twenty-eight Madison Avenue. I'd speak against this, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, it is a service position and running, you know, it's known, you know, we're doing it for service, servicing the citizens. Also, you know, I think I remember reading in, leading up to this, there was questions about costs borne by council members for certain items, and maybe for the mayor, some extra duties. A couple of things with that, I think, uh, a budget could be set up, and maybe it is already, for council members to, uh, not, not thinking the right word, uh, put in a request for reimbursement for legitimate expenses. Uh, if you're doing extra things around town, I have no trouble with you getting mileage for those. And I might say, "Well, it's only three miles, or four miles, or five miles," but it all adds up in time, because that's, that's a legitimate expense. Those are expenses for your duties. Just say, "Oh, well, this give you a straight fee, and you can take it out of it." I'd rather see you get reimbursed. And for mayor having more duties, I think, again, nothing requires the mayor to be at everything. I think with five council members, mayor could say, "Yeah, I can't be at this thing. How about one of the other council members?" That's, I mean, the mayor is not elected by the citizens, per se, it's done by the council itself. So I would say, if you do wanna do a raise, just start it out with this, this year's, uh, three percent, and then keep it up with the CPI from there, but not to jump it up as large as it are. But I'd like you to look at mileage reimbursement, other legitimate cost. So I would speak against this big raise for this, and this, do it for, have no trouble with the expenses. That's, that's a legitimate thing. How you define them, well, that's another discussion another day. But in mileage, I think that's legitimate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Counsel?
Uh, I would say, Chris has got some really good points. I think, uh, from the accounting perspective with regards to trying to track mileage, for example, me driving from here to a meeting at the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, you would spend more money in providing the accounting information to, to staff here, and, and, I mean, I think it would be a wash from, from saving it versus spending it. Um, and, uh, just a reminder, I know it's been a while since we had the conversation as to the reasoning. No, my reasoning for supporting this is to make this position available to all of the people out there that are non-exempt employees, that wouldn't be able to leave a second shift job to come here, because then at that point, they're spending money to be here to volunteer. And that's the biggest reason why I'm supporting this at this time.
Yeah, if I could piggyback that, um, a lot of you know I work full-time, and then I have a part-time job, uh, deliver pizzas. Uh, I give up time that I could be working, uh, to be here, so, um, I do give up some income to be here, and I, I realize it is a service position, Chris, and, um, that's definitely why I got into it. If you looked at hours we spend, if we spent ten hours in a, in a week, and we were making a hundred and twenty-five dollars in that week, it'd be about twelve-fifty an hour. That's okay. If you work twenty hours, um, then you're making six fifty an hour, and then you're starting to wonder, um, you know, how much more am I gonna take on? And then I'm giving up other pay, so, uh, besides that, giving up my, my free time away from my family, which I understood was gonna be part of it, uh, vacation or anything else that I have to try to schedule around to perform my duties here, I want this to be a desirable position, and I would like the person who follows me to be more qualified than I am, and I would like them to be willing to do it. I don't want someone to look at the pay and say, "It's not worth the time or trouble," or being wrong half the time, or the headache of having the community, um, argue, uh, something as, as small as this. And in the grand scheme of things, it's not much, but it's a little something. Uh, if you would like to come up here, you can.
Yeah, it's, it, I mean, it all...
Wait, wait till you get to the microphone.
It all adds up. But I mean, I think you need to look at it as a whole. Yes, it's, maybe get more qualified, but what does that mean? You can ask that question a lot. I mean, educa, being what I know, education does not mean you're, you're well-qualified.
No, I'm looking for, I'm looking for someone other than retirees. I'm looking for someone who, young like, um, myself, uh, who's driven, you know? I, I'm definitely work-oriented, I, I don't mind getting my hands dirty and doing work, but it takes away from some of the things I could be doing.
But that's, that's part of the service thing. Anything you do has that consequence. I mean, and, and as you said, yes, it can be a hassle to turn in, but I think that gives a better picture of what the city council members do, and that I understand the mileage thing.
Sure.
I do it myself, so I...
And we, and don't think that we, we do do that when we travel to, I mean, I think everybody up here has bid to League of Cities training, and we'll travel several hours. We, we turn those expenses in.
Right. But I mean, I think also for local expenses, I think, is legitimate.
Yeah, I think that would become more cumbersome than it would be beneficial.
Well, but it's still, it tracks.
My other thought was five hundred dollars in the nineteen nineties was probably a little more then than it is now.
It was, it was the equivalent of a thousand dollars today.
Okay, well, it, that's the way life is, but you're not gonna like the next statement, though.
I like the way you're thinking, though, Chris, you're thinking out, out of the box. And, and I did approach people in the community, and some people said, "Well, maybe you guys be reimbursed for a gym membership or something. Maybe it doesn't have to just be a salary." So, well, I always do appreciate those creative approaches where you're trying to think some different...
I mean, and you say, "Well, you know, I heard one, you know, I've spent money on this for, you know..." It's not your responsibility to spend money on citizen things as mayor or as a councilman. It's just not. You gotta know where to draw the line and those type of things, and a pay raise doesn't let you drive that, draw that line. So, and I think that's needed, so. I, I, I wouldn't mind a smaller percentage, if you wanna say, "Okay, we'll go a little bit more," but I think you're too far, and then index it for inflation, I have no problem with there either. But I think you should look at the whole expense type thing. See what you really cost you to do some things, travel, go to meetings in town. I think there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, staff gets, don't they use, don't they do mileage reimbursement for some things?
Not in town.
Not in town? Okay. But how often, how many have their own car they, or a city car? Just curious.
A few. We have some employees that drive their own vehicles for work.
Okay. So, anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I, I guess, I guess for me, it's, this isn't unheard of. I mean, it was done in nineteen ninety-seven, which is twenty-three years ago. And then in, in nineteen eighty-one, which was sixteen years before that, is the last two times that, that we found on a quick look that council pay has been revised. And I agree with you, Chris, it is, it is service. By the same token, in your service, you get compensated. Uh, it's not, not fairly, I'm not saying that, but, uh, for me, it, it's not about this council, because it'll take place after the next elections. Uh, for me, it's, it is about going forward in the future, uh, where, uh, with the mechanism in place, it'll be self-perpetuating, so they won't have to discuss it anymore and put everybody in the awkward position. This was brought up by Shane, um, after his eight years of service on the council, and I, I think, for one, it is, after twenty-three years, I think it's, it is, it is time to do something on it. Uh, so I'm going to support this, this, uh, this ordinance myself.
And I've been back and forth. I talked to several people, not one of them, uh, said, "Oh, no, the, the council shouldn't get it." If I get, if I have the figures correct, um, in ninety-one, did it go to, or, excuse me, eighty-one, it went to three hundred dollars a month?
Yeah, I don't think it's a hundred dollars.
In ninety-seven, it went to five hundred dollars a month. I think that's, is, is correct. So I've been back and forth on this, um, and I don't know how I'll finally end up voting, um, after talking to several people out in the community. I think it's an important job. I think, uh, a lot of people, uh, rely on us, and there's some pressure in that, but I, I have to tell you, this is my second full meeting, and this is the, the subjects that kept me up at night. So I can't tell you how I will end up on the final.
Any other comments from the audience or, uh, counsel? Let's vote. This is the second reading, by the way, you'll, we'll have a third reading, which we will vote on again, so. Kathleen?
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
No.
Moppen?
No.
Okay. Uh, resolution.
Uh, your honor, I have a resolution approving, uh, an agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on Stone Gates Center Drive.
I need a second.
Miss, second?
A second.
Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. Uh, this resolution is an addition from the work session. It was actually got lost in my email, but it needs to, uh, be processed, because it, it is something... If you could throw the map up there for me. Um, Stone Gates Sender Drive, um, is out by Comfort Inn and Suites. Uh, the infrastructure was installed, uh, and the city maintains that roadway in the short sewer, uh, out there. When the lights were originally installed, they were done where Alliant would not maintain them. Uh, therefore, the city did not accept the, uh, the maintenance of them. Alliant has now installed new lights that they will continue to maintain, and therefore, uh, the city, uh, could, uh, accept these two pieces of lights as infrastructure. So, that would be my recommendation to, uh, accept these, because...
So they've already, so they put lights in that we didn't like, so we didn't accept it. They've replaced it and put in new lights.
Correct.
So what would be the benefit of us accepting them, other than the fact that...
Other than we typically accept lights that meet those standards, um, in, in other subdivision areas. For instance, in Mr. Cahill's or Zizer's, they put in streetlights, and we accept those as parts of new infrastructure. And so this area is not new, uh, in that perspective, but the lights, um...
But again, what would be the benefit of us?
It's part of infrastructure that we do maintain. At Short Stove, we push snow and maintain, uh, the intakes and the san, sanitary sewer.
It meets our specs now, it didn't before. Any other spot, we would do it under similar circumstances, and, and the, the question would be asked, "Why aren't we doing it now if we, if we do any, any other..."
Gotcha. I? I, for one, that's, that's, with old lights, it was a dark road. I mean, that would come up on you on the, on the highway, and, uh, so I, I don't have a problem with it. If you recommend it, I'm, I'm, I'm with it. Anybody else?
Oh, I deliver pizzas out there, you're right, it's dark.
Light her up.
I'm sorry, I got out of sequence. Any comments from the audience on it? Okay, counsel, so, comments, anything else on that? Let's vote.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Moppen?
Yes.
Okay. Now, resolution number four, uh, off the consent agenda, resolution approving an agreement with Snyder and Associates for engineering services related to the design of the traffic signal improvements for the Roosevelt Corridor. Mr. McGregor?
I need a second.
I need a second.
Second.
Thanks.
So the, the resolution and then the corresponding, uh, professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants, or Snyder, I'm sorry, uh, is derived from a grant application, it's called ICAP. It's a Clean Air Act attainment, uh, funds. Uh, we accepted this grant money, uh, I think last fall, and then the DOT had to send an agreement for us. It took us some time for us to get that agreement. Snyder, uh, helped us develop the grant agreement, but then they've also worked with the DOT on the Highway sixty-one, um, study that they are performing. The dollar figure is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to, I'm sorry, what?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one, sorry. Transferred the two numbers there. Uh, to design, uh, an adaptive system up and down the Roosevelt Corridor, uh, that involves, um, laying new fiber to connect, um, all the traffic lights, uh, and then bring it into a central hub at Public Works. Uh, currently, uh, Mason Road through Kirkwood is coordinated, but the two intersections north of that are not. Um, I think it would bring a lot of coordination effort to that. It also would involve coordinating agencies, um, intersections at Columbia and Plaza West into that same coordination sequence, um, and then it'd, it'd bring all the infrastructure into the cabinets, uh, so...
Funded through road use tax?
Uh, tax, tax increment financing and the grant, uh, are paying for the project's total.
This is part of the larger scope of work that we kind of initiated last year, right? Because didn't we do a half-million-dollar project to connect a couple of these corridors last year, and this is the synchronization of that?
Hmm, we didn't spend that.
Uh, well, you did some improvements along the Agency Street Corridor, and when we talked, when we looked at that, we thought that, that you would envision being able to get them coordinated along with this.
But that, that project is, works with this project, right?
It will work with it, correct.
Yeah.
So if I understand how the lights are gonna work, if you, if you catch a green light coming onto...
So if I understand how the lights are going to work, if you, if you catch a green light coming onto Roosevelt, going south to north, you should be able, in theory, hit green lights all the way through?
When you have an adaptive system or a coordinated sequence, it isn't that you get all green lights.
Right.
It's to reduce the number of times that you have to stop and go. It's, the theory of the grant is that the less time you stop, you don't burn as many emissions off.
My personal experience has been thirty-seven miles per hour will get you all the way through. You can test it, but try thirty-seven. I'm out there a lot.
I'm all for saving gas and reducing emissions. I think it's a good thing.
Nick, let me ask you a question, because I think when we discussed this before, like last year or something, we talked about the possible side benefit that this may also help us stave off a bypass for, for a while anyway, for sixty-one. I mean, that was the, that was the primary principle of why we, why we did the Agency Street.
It will help the overall capacity on the numbers that the corridor can handle. I know that the DOT, I met with them with Jim last week and discussed another matter associated with it, but they're well aware of this project. I don't know the realistic nature of a bypass, but it doesn't hurt to have this type of, you know, project happen for coordination efforts.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Any questions?
Yeah, and this is for discussion.
For comments from the audience. I'm not giving up on that. Anyways, the reason I asked about this, and if you remember, I was against it back last fall. I said, no, because you're using TIF money, and TIF money always goes back on the taxpayers. I remember, you know, we talked that one time, you said at least a buck per assessment is for TIF projects. It's the overall, not this, this project, but overall. It's been a while since we talked about that. I got a pretty good memory for little things like that. The other thing is, why, you don't remember that? Okay, but it's been a while. Anyways. The reason I brought this up is Roosevelt and Division and a phone call I made to your office, and then talked to you, talked to secretary. And the timing of that intersection has changed to, I think, made that intersection more dangerous. And she was, I asked somebody else to call me back. He never called me back. Can't remember the name. Anyways, what I noticed with that intersection, that's why I'm asking about this, is they did something where, and the lady said DOT controls it. Are you going to be able with the synchronization, you control it? Or is the Iowa Department of Transportation going to control the signals? And then I'll, let me, and what I saw at Roosevelt was, I was going south and I had the green light to turn left going on to Division. The, they stopped the southbound traffic, northbound traffic and let me go. Where somebody was in the left turn lane, the turn lane to go west toward the hospital, they would, and I saw it happen one other time. They start, they would start turning, but the southbound traffic is still going forty, forty-five miles per hour. They're not stopping. They had the red light. There's no red light arrows or anything there. They would get clobbered. And that intersection has, over time, been a dangerous intersection anyways. People have, there's been some bad accidents at Roosevelt and Division. So that's why, and the lady said, you don't have control over it. The state of Iowa controls the timing. So with this new system, are you, you going to be controlling it, the city, or is the state going to be controlling it?
It's a safety issue here with that area, so.
The DOT does have jurisdiction over the lighting. They own the roadway, but we get to maintain the lighting infrastructure. We don't get to just choose to switch up a timing on a, on a coordination effort because it's the city we choose to. The DOT has oversight on that. And the lighting that he's referring to is, we have that same lighting pattern in other intersections. It's a delayed green arrow. And I have, we have received complaints about the way that functions where, you know, the green bulb goes away. And my answer, response to that would be is, as a green bulb, you're not having a protected left-hand turn. And by camping out into that roadway, which is what happens, is they, is they sit out there and then they want to turn left as the light turns yellow for them. That's not something I would recommend doing. You're not supposed to leave behind the stop bar until you're ready to make that turn. How do you make that safer? I don't know. It'll, it'll probably, the thing about this coordination is, is I'm not a traffic system engineer or anything. How they coordinate that may be completely different than what you see today from a lighting pattern. So I don't know how to respond to that, I guess.
But it's just, you understand what I'm saying with the controls. It's something you need to be looking at. Who's going to control it? How safe is it going to be? Right now, that intersection, I think.
Well, if somebody's doing forty-five on Roosevelt, I'm sure the chief took note of that and will, will put it in.
Well, if we limit it to forty-five over five, you're fine. Eight, you're fine.
The law is forty miles per hour, Chris, and we, I think we tried to uphold that.
Try that in Chicago.
Are there any other questions or concerns from the audience? Counsel? Kathleen, let's vote.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Yes, please.
Moppen.
Yes.
Okay, now we're on to the comments from the audience section. We want to hear your comments and concerns, however, because it is not on the agenda, we may not address it today. But please feel free to come forward.
I have something for you. Chris Ruckey, twenty-two twenty-eight Madison Avenue. Until you sign the contract, I'm not giving up on this. There. As I hand these out, at one of the Tiger Grimes meetings, which I attended, and it took me a while to find this information. There, I got two more. It was mentioned, he mentioned, one of the speakers mentioned some traffic figures for safe bike lanes, bike lanes, and it caught my attention. And I then went looking for that information, and it's taken me a while to find it. I'm not going to read this whole thing to you. You can peruse it later. But from the STBG grant application, you have some comments in there. I didn't highlight them. But it talks about safe bicycle space between Grimes and James Madison Schools. That's a lot of the other two. If you turn to the second page of this, this is for all ages and abilities bicycle facility. So all ages can use the bike lanes. This is from the, and, and, oh, let me go back to the other page, getting this going. From the Urban Bikeway Design Guidelines of the National Association of City Transportation Officials. Okay, this is where that comes from. That's where that information is from. As you can see on that second page, and I'm not going to go through it, but it gives like, it says twenty-five and below, traffic counts between three thousand, six thousand, what they recommend, buffered or protected bicycle lane. If you read the whole thing, and I'm going to let you peruse it, I didn't want to print out that whole thing, you will see that they're talking about who will use the bike lanes. You're, the grant says it'll be used by kids. They say, no, it won't because it won't be safe for them because it's not a protected, it's not a buffered bike lane. It'll be right next to traffic. And so again, I'm bringing this up because I still think removing the parking from Madison Avenue is not a good thing. And one of the reasons given for it was not to necessarily improve the neighborhood, not to improve the city, but I hate to throw this out, but I'm going to get my mileage from it. We need the money. And that was said, and when it was voted on, and then two weeks later, five hundred thousand dollars to collect parking lot. So that still kind of creates me a little bit. But you see those figures there, and I'm presenting it that you need to think about, is this going to be used for the purpose? Is it going to be, are families going to feel safe to bring their kids down that bike lane to the park? Are parents going to feel safe to bring their, let their kids ride to Grimes School? Mr. Trister, this is something your wife works at Grimes in that age group. This is something you could ask her about, you know, for that age group. Would she say, yeah, they can ride on a four-foot bike lane in the way to school? Would you take your kids on that to the park from Grimes School? I don't think, this is not going to serve the purpose of what you want it to. There's better alternatives, and I could sit down and discuss ideas that would work better. I believe it'd make the city a better place. This, this takes away from the value of the residents, makes their, on Madison Avenue, makes their life difficult. And again, most of the money for this project is being spent on Ninth Street. All of Madison Avenue is getting scraped and relayed over, right over Brick Street. So I wanted to let you know about this. I know you can't respond. If you want to talk about it further, just let me know, call me. But I think there's better alternatives. This doesn't help. You can read this, get this online and read it. And you got the figures there. I averaged the traffic counts for those years. Where did I get them? I found it online, the Iowa website. Two, from the SBG grant, they gave some. And speed limits, thirty on Harrison, on Madison, south of Harrison, yeah, it's thirty, but people are hauling. Fifty, sixty, fifty, sixty. I've caught myself doing forty because when I'm going out of town for something on Madison. North of Harrison, I live there, thirty, thirty is, twenty-five is the speed limit, thirty is probably the average. So this, it's not going to be safe. And I got to keep on doing this until you sign the contract because I don't think it's good for the city. Won't be used for the purposes which you attend it, won't have the property values or the citizens' residents on Madison Avenue.
Thank you. We welcome your input. Thanks, Chris.
Wish you could have seen the chief's face when you told him you were going forty and thirty.
Well, you do, well, that was, that was on the script. I saw, I mean, from Madison, from south to Harrison, neighbors, you should put trap.
Oh, we need you up at the mic. Sorry, Chris.
Neighbors, neighbors talking, when we were talking about this and removing the parking, we said, that'll make the street faster. Should just put the drag race trap lights in, you know, from, from south and that. But from Harrison South, people really do move in that section. And with that, you ever thought about deer crossing signs there? They're crossing all the time, and that's stretched by James Madison South. I see it all the time. Anyways, it's really, I don't see the safety factor for the kids. They won't use it. Yeah, you might save some money, but it doesn't improve the overall aspect of what you're trying to do. So, but people really do move on Madison Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Is there anyone else from the audience that has any comments or concerns today? All right. Now, comments from, let's go with staff. Catherine, do you have anything from Eric's office? No? Rhonda? Three wise guys, Chief Kramer, Chief Trixel, Nick.
Gold, frankincense, and myrrh.
I went wise guys, it's out of holiday season.
I don't know.
Nick?
I just wanted to remind, we've, we've put out a press release and posted on Facebook that there is a public listening session on next Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, at the library. I think they're probably using both rooms. It starts at five-thirty. I think it's supposed to go for an hour and a half or two.
Two.
So I just wanted to remind, I know that we still have a meeting between now and then, but I give people at least a week to, to be able to plan in their schedule rather than two days, so.
That's for the Cascade Bridge?
It's about Cascade Bridge. Yep.
Don, did you have anything? Okay, Jim?
In regards to the TIF financing, if we did no, had no TIF debt, did no TIF projects, it would release enough value to change, and we would have the same amount of revenue coming to the general fund with a dollar lower tax levy. That would probably be what it is. So in context, if you were to not do TIF, we are, I think, over-leveraged on TIF. We're over-leveraged on all debt. It's where we are as a community. I think it's an issue. And over time, I think it needs to come down. But it doesn't mean that we, that I recommend stopping work. I think it's just something that we have to get, get in hand and make sure that we're putting it towards the right projects. Couple of things that are going on. We'll be seeking an amended sales tax increment schedule from the state. The sales tax increment schedule that we have is to fund the flood mitigation work. We received the twenty-six million dollars. After four years, we have not received the full amount, the first year we did. Then with the plant finishing, completing construction down in Weaver, we saw the sales tax collections go down. We've seen a rebound, but not up to the original estimates. We'll be asking for an amendment to that schedule and extending out a couple of extra years, hoping that they'll adjust and give us some of those incremental values in later years rather than the earlier ones that we had anticipated. Reminder, a special work session on Thursday, three-thirty. We'll have the BRE descom as well as Eric's department doing a budget presentation. Exit issues was supposed to be this last Thursday. Instead, it got moved to this, I'm sorry, last Saturday.
Same day, got you.
Gets you the right day. It'll be this, this Saturday up at the chamber, so if you're interested, please RSVP with the chamber.
Seven-thirty, right?
Seven-thirty. The focus this time is on property tax reform. I don't know what may or may not come up. As a, just though for a couple of, a frame of reference for a couple of the things that are being discussed right now. The governor released her, in her State of the Union, her recommended budget. It included having a backfill fully funded. That's four hundred and fifty thousand or so for us overall. It's a major issue to see that she's at least coming from a starting point of fully funding that and upholding the promises that they have that's built into state code. She also gave her recommendation on the Rule Iowa initiative, I'm sorry, on Funding Iowa. That's a big, big deal. With Funding Iowa, increasing the penny on the sales tax at the state level. Funding water infrastructure is a huge issue, but part of it is an offset of some of the county's expenditures that come through property taxes at the local level to fund mental health. That is a significant issue for all of us. It's another part of that property tax reform issue. And so as, as the discussions go on, I think Tom Broker is going to be speaking from a county perspective. I assume that that's part of what he'll be discussing when he talks about property tax reform. But those are, that's part of that context to what needs to be kept in mind as that moves forward. And then the only other thing I had, Stephanie, you talked about our health insurance renewal. Zero percent increase is what we're looking like? That is an amazing deal.
Yeah, it is.
Now, what does that mean for, for budget purposes? Well, typically, we don't amend what we're presenting for a budget. Five percent, though, in the general fund is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. I throw that out there as a number. I also have a concern and a caveat on it. We have built into our contracts five percent increase every year annually. So even if there's a savings in one year, that, that can be gone in the second year. So it can be part of a discussion about how do you address potential issues you have that come up? But it's not a long-term solution for, for covering costs. Do want to make sure that you have that out there as part of your thought process, so as we talk about budgets over the next couple of weeks.
So if we were going to do something different with the budget this year,
You could make it work.
Use those funds this year.
For the first year, but you'd have to identify something.
That goes away, then we would need to be prepared to make that adjustment at that point.
Yeah, and you may put yourself in a, just, I mean, you don't know, you're, you're out, but you've put yourself.
But it's different every year.
Behind. You have put yourself behind if you do that without having an ongoing funding stream.
Yep.
And it's, I don't recommend doing it without an ongoing funding stream, but you can.
The option of the funding stream. I mean, you would have to have whatever future.
You have to have something, what's your backstop? Are you talking about?
That's my point.
Making a cut? I mean, if you, if you do something. I mean, if you, if you do something that's an ongoing expenditure, recognizing that you are, can figure out how to cover it the first year, what is your plan for doing it in the out years?
Two, three, four.
So make sure you still are addressing that. That's it.
Anything else? Okay. Counsel, let's round the horn. Bill, you got anything? PT?
Some of us attended a wonderful Martin Luther King celebration last night, and we were rocking the church. It was really fun. I encourage you to attend next year if you can.
I agree with that. Also, anybody listening, I would like to remind everyone, I do spend a lot of time out on the road, and I do see people that race by me to get up to the red light, only to stop at the same red light I stopped at. And sometimes, because I'm doing 37, I just cruise right on by them while they're sitting there stopped. And so just keep the speed down. The roads are slick. I would hate for someone to take someone's family away from them because they were in a rush to save 15 seconds. You can give that 15 seconds back and save a life, so just be considerate of the other people around you, please.
Matt?
Good. Do we have radio?
All right. No. In fact, do be pondering radio, because that's the same time as Southeast Iowa days, and so we'll need a couple people for that. So think about that for the 12, 13th. I'll be...
Is that in February?
February, February.
Who's going to the Des Moines?
I'm going to Des Moines.
I'm going to that. Are you going, Linda?
No. My husband's having surgery.
On Wednesday? So Bill, Robert, are you two?
I couldn't possibly go.
I'm having surgery on Wednesday.
Oh, no.
Do you need an extra person? Do you want me to go? Because I was, I was going to talk to my wife.
It's, it's, it's totally up to you. I mean, it's, because they do it every year, so...
We need somebody on the radio, too.
We should probably give the radio a heads up to swap weeks.
I already did. I already talked to them. Because, Jim, do you normally go to the Southeast Iowa?